And we're on the air, guys. Okay. Good evening, everyone. This is a special city council meeting, and I would call this meeting to order. Our first order of business is a council discussion, a farewell, and outgoing. Richfield City Council member-at-large Susan Sandal. This is her last meeting as council. She has an HRA meeting right after this. But I have another small presentation to you, which I will hand you after I read it. This is from Senator Amy Klobuchar, and it's addressed to Councilmember Sue Sandal. It says, "Congratulations on your retirement after 16 years of service on the Richfield City Council. You have served your constituents with honor and integrity. Your dedication to the community through your advocacy for infrastructure investment and your service on the Housing and Redevelopment Authority is truly appreciated. Today, I join your family, friends, and colleagues in thanking you for all that you have contributed through your work. I hope that you take this time to enjoy your retirement. Sincerely, Amy Klobuchar, United States Senator."
Well, that's lovely. Thank you. I want to comment. Several people said, "Well, what are you going to do now when you have all this extra time?" And I finally figured it out.
Oh, good.
The answer is, I'm just going to make more of my choir rehearsals. I've been missing every other rehearsal. Now I can go to them.
Yeah, now you can.
So I'm not really staying home.
But you know, I'd like to renew my, you know, my, what I always have asked you is, I can make myself available if you want to buy me lunch.
I'll keep that in mind. Okay. I'll keep that in mind. Seems to me I usually pay, Edwina.
Devich will, too. He puts like that. You know what? She invited me to go over to her house and cook a meal for her and Mike.
And she said, "How hot do you like it?"
Well, congratulations. That was nice of the senator to say that.
Yes, it's lovely. Thank you.
This is a continuation of the public hearing and consideration of a resolution approving the transfer of the Richfield Cable franchise and change of control of the guarantee from Comcast to Midwest Cable. Let me get to the actual item. I'm going to read a little bit on the executive summary so folks have a little bit more background on this, because we're going to have a presentation. Is that correct, city manager? Okay. On June 18th, each of the five-member cities of the Southwest Suburban Cable Commission received the FCC Form 394 from Comcast requesting approval of a transfer of the cable system from the Comcast to Midwest Cable, known as Midwest. Under FCC regulations, the member cities had 120 days to approve or deny the proposed transfer. In response to the timeline, the city of Richfield opened a public hearing on the transfer matter on September 23rd, 2014. However, because Comcast and the new proposed guarantee did not trans-
Grantee.
Grantee, excuse me, did not have the required information available to consider the matter at that date, the public hearing was continued. Since that time, the deadline for consideration by the member cities of the Southwest Suburban Cable Commission has extended to January 15th, 2015. In addition, the legal, technical, and financial information regarding the proposed transfer and the new grantee was provided to Moses and Barnett, the legal counsel retained by the Cable Commission, to represent them in this matter. The attorney, Brian Grogan, submitted a detailed report regarding the proposed transfer to the Cable Commission, and subsequently, the Cable Commission unanimously passed a motion approving the transfer and recommended approval of the transfer by its individual member cities. And this will have some impact on Richfield Cable subscribers. They will be able to maintain their telephone numbers that they've had with Comcast, but will ultimately be transferred off the Comcast.net email domain. It's likely that the new email domain will be charter.com. Subscribers will be able to keep existing cable equipment in their homes for the foreseeable future, as the company indicates that all the equipment will be compatible with the new programming lineup offered by Midwest Cable. However, it's possible that further transition of the equipment may occur down the road. So with that information, I would open this up for the presentation.
Thank you, madam mayor, members of the city council. In a second, I'm going to ask Brian Grogan, the attorney for Moss and Barnett, to make the presentation to the city council. It's, the transfer of the cable franchise seems like a very straightforward thing. However, in reality, just like a lot of other things, it's very complex. And in that process, you're going to go through some slides. And I think it's very hard to get your arms all the way around exactly what's happening. But to make a long story kind of short, we're part of a major transition across the United States where Comcast has bought out Time Warner and ultimately ends up with too many subscribers, probably, for what they would want to present to the FCC. And so Comcast is divesting itself of subscribers, and the Twin Cities areas is part of that. So, Brian, take it away.
Thank you. Mayor, members of the council, for the record, my name is Brian Grogan. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Moss and Barnett in Minneapolis. I represent the Cable Commission and therefore indirectly the city of Richfield as one of the member jurisdictions. I apologize I'm not standing tonight. I had a little procedure done on my foot last week, and so I'm in a boot. And you were kind enough to let me sit here, so I, my foot very much appreciates that. The transaction is very complicated. I'm going to try to give you some visuals to help you understand what's going on. The takeaway, though, is Comcast is in all likelihood going to be gone from this market at the end of the first quarter next year. No longer will they be doing business in the state of Minnesota, not just Richfield, not just the Twin Cities. They will be out of the state of Minnesota and have no physical presence left here, at least as it relates to serving residential customers. They may have some offices, some call centers, but they won't have any customers here in Minnesota. Now, it assumes that the FCC ultimately approves this big transaction that both the mayor and Steve was describing. So, actually, we should have a slide just prior to that, but anyway, I'm going to show you this. This is a pre-merger cable markets. If you look at these different colors, and I know it's not the greatest quality, look at Minnesota, and you see those blue dots that represent the Twin Cities market. That's what Comcast currently controls in Minnesota. The yellow and green are the other two major cable operators, Charter Communications and MediaCom. We're going to talk about Charter in a minute, because they play a big role in what's going to happen to Minnesota. What this whole transaction is about is Comcast and Time Warner joining forces in an effort for Comcast to have some synergies in markets largely like a horseshoe around the United States. Starts up in Seattle, goes all the way down California, through Texas, all the way back up the East Coast, at the heart of where the population centers are. So this began with Comcast merging with Time Warner back in February of last year. When they combine, they're going to take the 11 and a, about 11 and a half million customers that Time Warner had, add it to Comcast, 23 million, you end up with about 34 million customers. It requires approval from the city, requires approval at the state level for certain telephone authority that they have, and it certainly requires approval at the federal level for antitrust concerns. Whenever you have a company that's this big, federal government gets involved to make sure that they don't have too much market power to start dictating what people can see and watch and control. There's kind of an unwritten rule at the FCC that says you can't be more than 30 million customers in the United States, or it just automatically feels wrong for antitrust purposes. So Comcast voluntarily agreed to divest itself 4 million customers. That's where the story gets interesting for the Twin Cities. Here you can see the 34 million customers, the blue being what Comcast has today, the red being what they were going to acquire with Time Warner. And we were, of course, an existing Comcast hub there in the Minneapolis-St. Paul area. But what they had to do is get rid of those 4 million customers in order to try to get this approved at the federal level. So they announced back in April they were going to sell those customers, and they ended up selling 1.4 million of them to Charter Communications. Charter ideally would have liked to take all 4 million of them, but they couldn't. So what they ended up doing is splitting off and doing some system swaps, and they ultimately had to create a new entity to take on these additional subscribers. The Twin Cities market fell into the grouping that was placed with this new entity. So this slide simply shows kind of a straight line of what the Comcast and the Charter transaction will look like. But here's the company I really want to talk about, because this is who is going to be serving Richfield customers, Richfield business. Today, we're calling them Midwest Cable. They started out being known as a company called SpinCo, which is something you put into a typical merger agreement. They were spinning off a piece of their company. They renamed it Midwest Cable. And when this transaction closes at the end of the first quarter of next year, they're going to be known as Greatland Connections. So you'll start getting cable bills as a Richfield cable customer from Greatland Connections next year. Because their name is Midwest Cable, as we sit here today, I'm going to refer to them in this presentation as Midwest Cable. And I know this gets complicated, so if you feel like you need to stop me and back me up, let me know. So 2 and 1/2 million of these customers got put into the Midwest Cable bucket. Everything from the Twin Cities market to Detroit, Michigan, all the way down to parts of Alabama got put into this. Midwest Cable, it's important here to emphasize, they are a brand-new company. There's no operating history at all for this company. They don't own any cable franchises today. So if you ask me, "Well, Brian, did you go and check on their performance in other cities where they operate?" The answer is, no, we didn't, because they don't have any existing franchises as we sit here today. I'll describe their executive team and their experience, some of the financing in a moment, but they will be a brand-new company. They'll likely be a Fortune 500 company the day they actually close the transaction, but as we sit here today, they have no past experience that we can look to. This is what's supposed to be an easy look at this reorganization chart. Nothing gets easy, though, as you go through this. What we're going to really do is Comcast is spinning off this Midwest Cable piece, and Charter's going to end up buying a piece of it. This shows you kind of a snippet of where Charter and the Midwest systems will be owned around the country. Again, not very illuminating for us, except that we see that orange dot where the Twin Cities is, that's going to be Midwest Cable. All those blue dots around it are where Charter currently has cable system. And I'm going to tell you where they have cable systems in Minnesota, because Charter's actually going to be hand-in-hand with Midwest operating this system. So Midwest Cable's going to have a separate board of directors, going to be owned a third by Charter, 2/3 by Comcast. And when we say, "Well, if Comcast is going to own it, why is it really any different?" It's actually not owned by Comcast Corporate. It's owned by their shareholders. Their shareholders will be given shares of this new company, but Comcast won't control them at all. They're going to have nine board members. A key hire that they made was a gentleman named Michael Willner. He's a gentleman who has 40 years' experience in the cable industry. He operated some cable systems, really was a, started a, founded a cable system down in southern Illinois and Indiana. He ran this company called Insight Communications for a number of years and ultimately sold it off. They brought him back into the industry, and really, most of his executive team, those are the people who are going to be running Midwest Cable. They have solid executive experience, clearly know what they're doing in the industry. What they're missing, however, is kind of the team has not been together for a while, and they're acquiring portions of Comcast, and they need a great deal more infrastructure to run the system. That's where their combination with Charter's coming in. So this slide, if you focus on really the 67% that's going to be owned by the Comcast shareholders, right in the middle of the slide, and the 33% that's going to be owned by Charter, you can see the box that says Midwest Cable. Down below that is the company that's going to own Richfield's cable system. That's the operating entity. What we're here tonight is to decide whether we're going to approve this big transaction. The timeline, I think the mayor described it best, we got this form back in June. We initially were supposed to have a deadline of 120 days. We should have been deciding on this in October. But because this is so complicated, and because there was so much financial information that the companies had to produce, they extended the deadline first to December 15th. Now our deadline is January 15th. And that's the time period during which we have to decide whether Midwest Cable has the requisite legal, technical, financial qualifications, operate the system here in Richfield. Let's get into the nitty-gritty. You described this a little bit, mayor, in your executive summary, but who's going to be driving the trucks in the city of Richfield? Are they going to say Comcast? Are they going to say Charter? What are they going to say? Midwest Cable is going to acquire the technical field personnel of Comcast here in the Twin Cities. So the technicians that work in your city today will become employees of Midwest Cable. However, the customer service call center people, the billing people, all the other infrastructure that Comcast has, those will not become Midwest employees. The only other folks that are going over to Midwest Cable will be the government relations team that you probably interface with on a regular basis, or that Mr. Devich does. They are going to be offered opportunities to be employed at Midwest Cable and continue the role that they play here. Everything else that goes into running a cable system is in all, for all practical purposes, going to be handled by Charter, almost through a subcontract relationship. And I'm going to describe that relationship. Let's talk first about who is Charter. Charter currently runs cable systems in Duluth, St. Cloud, Marshall, you can see the list, Rochester, all the way down to Winona. Virtually every major city in Minnesota, other than the Twin Cities, Charter controls today, which is why it makes sense for them to provide some of these ancillary services to Midwest. Today, Charter provides service to a little over 6 million customers in 29 states. They're a Fortune 500 company. They have over 23,000 employees. If this transaction goes through and gets approved at the federal level, they will acquire another million and a half customers, and then they will provide management services and additional services to another 2 and 1/2 million. So they're going to go from a 6-million subscriber company, for all practical purposes, to a 10-million subscriber company overnight, which is going to be a big, huge task for any company to nearly double the size. And that's a concern everybody has, is, you know, how is this transition going to take place? Here's what Charter's going to do for your city and for the residents in Richfield. First of all, Midwest is going to pay 4 and 1/4% of every dollar that they make on voice, video, and data to Charter to provide some of the services. They're also going to pay ongoing actual costs for these services. So every phone call that Charter answers, Midwest Cable's going to get a bill for that, and they're going to have to pay because they're having Charter do all this work. They'll handle everything from programming to every programming contract that Charter negotiates with CBS or ESPN, Midwest Cable's going to use their programming agreements in hopes that they can get better pricing. Network operation, engineering, voice operation, certain field operations, the expectation is, if the need exists, folks from Rochester, their Charter's employees, may be up here running trucks through your city if that need required. Billing, collections, marketing, sales, everything will be run by Charter. Midwest Cable will simply be paying them to do these services. I think the mayor and Steve also described a little bit on the impact on the individual customers. You can keep your phone number. So if you're a Comcast customer and you use their telephone service, maybe you buy a triple play, you're not going to have to change your phone. That's good. You can keep your equipment in your home, at least for the foreseeable future. Charter anticipates that their program lineup, which I believe they call Spectrum, will be compatible with the existing Comcast equipment. I personally have the Comcast set up over in St. Paul in my home. I'm glad I'm not going to have to transition all my equipment out. I finally got it working. I want it to stay where it is and be able to be used. So that's another positive. They make no promises down the road. Of course, things could change, but for the foreseeable future, no change in equipment. Emails will transition. It can be a huge headache for businesses, for customers. Can you think about that? How many people use a Comcast.net email address? There's a lot. So whether you're going to switch to charter.com, which is the likely domain name that it would be, or you'll switch to a Gmail or another ISP, the transition will have to occur. The companies commit, of course, to provide for forwarding of emails for a period of time so that there isn't loss in that, but that will be an inconvenience for customers. I'm certain it will generate call volume for these companies. They'll have to deal with that. Billing will also transition. If this transaction closes in the first quarter, you'll start getting bills from Greatland Connections, not from Comcast. So that will be a change. If you have an online bank payment, for example, that just automatically pays your Comcast bill, that'll have to be switched, because you won't be paying Comcast anymore. You'll be paying a new billing service provider. Go to financial review. If it's not confusing enough, the operational and the technical side of this, the financial review is particularly confusing, and I'm not going to hope tonight to explain it to you in this presentation. We have about a nine-page summary in our report of this. There's no question that Midwest is going to be taking on a significant amount of debt to operate this system. The cable industry as a whole is highly leveraged in most respects. Comcast is the one outlier on that. Comcast has, for whatever reason, probably due to their sheer volume and number of customers, they have a much more robust balance sheet. They do not have the same leverage many others in the cable industry. Unfortunately, Comcast won't be our provider anymore. We'll now have Midwest. They will be, by their own admission, a highly leveraged company. What does that mean for Richfield customers? We can't regulate rates. So it's not as if we could put a condition in here to say, "You guarantee that the rates won't change for the next two years." We can't do that. What we're concerned about, of course, is that because of these additional expenses, that there'll be pressure on subscriber rates to increase. There may also be pressure to reduce capital expenditures, not fix things that go wrong, because there's only so much capital to go around. The answer from the company is, a lot of cable operators, including MediaCom, Charter, that are the next two dominant operators in the state of Minnesota, have very similar debt-to-equity ratios. So, you know, it's not a basis that we could use to deny. It's a concern. They know it's a concern. We've had our accountants talking to them on a regular basis. It is what it is. They believe they're going to be very financially viable. They believe they can grow the subscriber base, and ultimately, they believe that their affiliation with Charter is going to make them a very successful company. Based on what we have in front of us, we don't think there's a basis on which the city could deny for a lack of financial qualifications, but it's important to understand that, again, by their own admission, they will be a highly leveraged company. We reviewed this entire presentation and all these documents with the commission about a week ago, and after consideration and questions from the commission, remember, that's five cities, Edina, Eden Prairie, Hopkins, Minnetonka, and Richfield. And those 10 representatives from those cities, there was unanimous consent to approve the resolution that's before you tonight, and that unanimous motion was a recommendation in favor of that, of approving this resolution. So what does the resolution provide? Number one, it would approve this transaction. So it would say, from the Richfield City Council, that we hereby approve. I know that's not an easy vote for you to take. What we tried to do is put in some conditions in this resolution to help mitigate some of your concerns. First and foremost, we put in a corporate guarantee so that the operating entity that owns your franchise, it would be guaranteed by the ultimate parent of Greatland, meaning all 2 and 1/2 million customers would have to go under in order for them not to satisfy the financial obligations they have here in Richfield. So you have the strength of the parent company standing behind the operating entity here. That, we believe, is a positive. We were able to obtain some clarifications in your franchise on issues, even though we just negotiated it two years ago, there were certain things that were ambiguous, and Comcast has largely, through a course of performance, has handled those things for us. We were able to get both the new operator and Comcast to agree to this resolution that would verify certain commitments that they're going to make and verify that there won't be any additional charges to the city or to the commission. Customer service, one of the key issues, based on all my comments tonight, that I'm most concerned about, is when all these people start calling, can Charter actually handle this call volume? Are your constituents going to get the answers they want? We put two things in this resolution to try to address that. One is a maintenance of what's called an escalated complaint procedure, so that when Mr. Devich gets phone calls from customers, he has basically a hotline directly to a team of professionals at the cable operator, doesn't have to go through the general switchboard, doesn't have to go through a typical CSR. Somebody will handhold that customer that Mr. Devich turns over to them, make sure that their problem is solved, and then report back to Mr. Devich if there's a problem or if it was somehow not resolved, satisfaction of the customer. Crucial issue, because without that, the city's somewhat helpless. All we can do is point them to a 1-800 number, and largely, that's why the customer's disgruntled in the first place. Second thing we did is, to make sure that this transition occurs properly, the companies agreed that for the first two years after close of the transaction, they will meet on up to a quarterly basis with either the commission, or with your management team, or if necessary, with the elected officials, to verify how they're handling customer service, address problems that they're having, explaining cures and fixes that they're putting in place if required, basically trying to verify that they are all hands on deck and they will try to move through this transition. I don't think anybody anticipates going to be a seamless transition, but these kinds of mechanisms will allow your management team here in Richfield to basically oversee that, and if there's a problem, flex a little bit of pressure on the company to make sure they're addressing the Richfield subscriber needs. Lastly, all of the costs that were incurred by the commission, and therefore indirectly by the city, the companies agreed to reimburse. So the time and effort we put to this presentation, all of the research, all of the review of the financial records, the companies agreed to reimburse. Similar to what you would expect if somebody were transferring a license in town, you had to do background due diligence, you would expect the applicant to reimburse the city's costs. With all of that in mind, I think I'll pause on my presentation and take any questions the council may have. I note we also have a representative here for Comcast this evening. I'll let him introduce himself and his title, and he's here, I think, to represent the company and potentially also Midwest Cable. If you have questions, direct to them.
Counsel, do you have questions regarding the presentation or any information? Councilmember Sandal?
It's been a while since we've talked about cable, and I just don't remember the facilities. I remember a number of years ago, there was a big discussion about filming facilities, public access, that kind of thing. How does that get affected?
Because we have a new franchise, which we're fortunate, two years ago, we adopted a new franchise, and the city council here in Richfield did as well, and we consolidated our programming facilities. Edina is now kind of the playback hub, and then we have a separate contract with Bloomington that serves as the studio facility for any of your residents that want to film. That all stays intact. None of that changes. In fact, some of the conditions in the resolution solidify commitments that the company made and that there won't be additional charges imposed to maintain those going forward.
Thank you. You know, Comcast has been a really great community advocate. I mean, they've done a lot of help and worked at the ARC. They've pulled Buckthorn, they do their Comcast Care Days, they have helped fund some internet programming through MIRA and everything like this. Will that kind of community service also be a part of the new entity?
I'll give the legal answer, and then I certainly can defer to Comcast on that. That's not something we can, of course, obligate them to in a resolution like this. Anecdotally, they'll let the communications from the companies certainly offer up a commitment of giving back to the community, but those things, of course, are all voluntary. Comcast has the history and track record of having walked the walk. I can't speak to whether the new company will follow that same commitment, one would hope.
Mike, do you have any input? Can you go to the mic up there and introduce yourself? I mean, I know you, but I don't know that everybody does.
Absolutely. Mayor, council, my name is Mike Logan. I'm a director with Comcast locally of Government Affairs. Thanks for having me tonight. And Councilmember Sandal, I'm sorry that this is your last meeting in relation to cable. Wish we'd carried that on for years. It is cintillate. So in relation to the community investment aspect, mayor, what I'd say to that is, again, it's anecdotal, because the company doesn't exist yet, but in my communication with Michael Willner, the incoming CEO, and with other executive staff, they have a very long track history of absolutely maintaining that level of investment. I certainly can't speak to whether or not it will increase, but they have a long track record on that front, both within Insight and within their conversations, I think, amongst other leaders around the footprint that will be SpinCo Midwest Cable and/or GLC Greatland Connections. So I'm confident that that will be the case. I also just want to take one moment to maybe speak to one item or two that Mr. Grogan mentioned, just to clarify. There are a lot of pieces still in play in relation to some of these transitional service agreements. So we aren't 100% confident that all call centers will be that of Charter Communications. There may, in fact, be a call center that is of Greatland Connections. The silver lining in that is that we are also very confident that those call centers, regardless of who runs them, will be domestic, that they will all be in the U.S. I know that's been a pinch point over the last few years, as Comcast has gone through a transition of having international coverage, but I just want to point that out. It is a point of differentiation.
Also, you've been offering Comcast has a product called Internet Essentials for our low-income, and that's what we've been working with, with MIRA. Is the new entity prepared to do something similar?
They are. We've had some conversations about Internet Essentials as a transitional period from and away from Comcast. It probably won't be called Internet Essentials, but no decisions have been made on that front. Greatline Connections is prepared to offer an ongoing commitment to some form of low-income service as a community focus. So that will continue in some form or another. I'm just not quite- I'm just not quite sure what it would be called or exactly what form it will take. I think one of the things you'll find with Greatland Connections leadership is they're very nimble. One of the things that they take great pride in is that they're going to have the scale of both a Comcast and a Charter, ultimately with Charter running the back side of the house predominantly. But they are going to have a nimbleness as a leadership team and as a much smaller company to make decisions, both in the competitive environment, but also within the community environment, to be much more relevant. And I think once you have a chance to meet this leadership team, and you will have that chance ostensibly in 2015 and beyond, I'm pretty confident they're going to reaffirm that sentiment around their culture and how they approach these kinds of things.
Okay. Right. What about the programming? Is it going to change significantly?
I can't speak to that tonight. What I can tell you is that because the platform will be transitioning away from the Xfinity suite of services that Comcast has today, and will be moving to something called Spectrum, which is the Charter product, there are going to be probably differences between the two. But again, those details have not fully been worked out. There's also a question around boxes. Mr. Grogan mentioned it. There's a new platform that's recently come out called X1 on the part of Comcast, a much newer IP-focused box that acts more like a computer than a cable box, but none of those are coming out of homes. And in fact, Charter is working out a technology that they're very, very close, I think, to rolling out nationwide in their footprint that allows for something called a reverse IP stream, which would allow existing cable boxes to work very much like our new platform. So in relation to channels, I think that's going to give them a capability that even Comcast doesn't have today with its older platforms and its older boxes. But channel lineups for the foreseeable future, once the transition happens, no customer's going to experience any change. They'll turn on their TV and every channel will be as it was the day before, but over time, yes, I could see there being alterations to lineups, to placement, that sort of thing.
And will they be able to use their computers to watch TV? I mean, when I travel, I can get up on Xfinity and watch as well because I have a...
Sure, the mobile platform. Again, I can't speculate tonight, but that is certainly something that Charter's been working on. It's certainly something that Comcast already has. And as we look at these transitional service agreements, I'm quite confident they're talking about that sort of capability so that there is a seamless experience on the part of the customer.
Councilmember Fitz Henry.
I know under Xfinity, some people have alarms or home controls. Is that going to be picked up also by Greatland or...
I can't speak to that tonight. I don't have that information in front of me, and they've not talked about that as a suite services in terms of home security being part of a triple play or quadruple play. But again, they're looking at those things because they know it's part and parcel of what people have in the now and would hopefully and ostensibly use it as a business unit moving forward, but I can't speak to that tonight.
Councilmember Sandel, and then I'll come back.
Yeah. Okay. This is a silly question, but not for me, and that is, I finally memorized all the numbers of the various channels that I like to watch. Are they going to stay the same, or am I going to have to learn a whole new set?
For the near term, they will stay the exact same. I'm sorry, I can't speculate on the mid to longer term on that front. I'm in the same boat, by the way. Although, I will say from a customer-friendliness standpoint, there are things that Comcast has rolled out in the last year or two years, ranging from voice activation to voice search to apps that interact with your TV that make all of that much easier. I would expect that those things would continue in some form or another, but from a memorization standpoint, I'm afraid I can't speculate tonight.
Counsel.
My question is, what's the stability going to be on this change? Because a number of cities have seen constant changes. Are we kind of guaranteed five years, 10 years, or...
In terms of the ownership structure of the company, there is a minimum of three years that Charter is prohibited from having any sort of controlling stake in the company. So I would say that at a minimum for the next three years, you will absolutely have Greatland Connections operate as an independent company. If they don't like who their vendor is, in this case being Charter, they have every right to fire them and find another one. That may mean Comcast, it may mean another vendor, but they will operate independently for that period of time. Again, beyond that time period, I can't speculate. It's hard to say. I mean, we've gone through... Brian, you might have to help me with this. I think it's 14 operators in this market since the inception of cable?
Something like that. This deal is structured, of course, everyone's guessing the future might hold, but it seems custom-made for Charter to ultimately acquire this.
That's what I'm guessing.
Once they have the financial capability to do that. The reason they're not doing it today is it just simply wasn't sufficient financing available to them to take on two and a half million customers in addition to the one that they were already buying. If they had that available, I think we'd be talking about approving Charter today. That's just me guessing. But clearly documented, structured so that they're prohibited for the first three years. Thereafter, though, if all goes according to plan, the expectation would be we'll be back in front of you considering transfer of Greatland to Charter. But as Mr. Logan mentioned, a lot of things can change in three years, so there's no obligation after. Just seem a logical step.
Okay, thanks.
Councilmember Elliott, you look perplexed.
You know, I made the mistake of going and looking at the financial analysis, and there's a reason that I don't practice transactional law because you make a statement and then you kind of circle back on yourself and disqualify the statement. I'm just curious, you talk about it being highly leveraged, it's, there's, for lack of a better term, and like I said, I don't do transactional stuff, there seems to be an awful lot of insider dealing on it. And I'm just questioning the statement that's made, and I understand having to qualify it, but it's on top of page 20, and first sentence says, "Based solely on Midwest financial information that we reviewed, Midwest public filings assume that Midwest will receive sufficient debt commitments and the required debt to consummate the transaction agreement." Then it goes on to say, "Based on the foregoing and limited strictly to the financial information analyzed in conducting this review, we do not believe that Comcast requests..." or financial... "We do not believe that Comcast requests for transfer of the ownership of the system to Midwest can reasonably be denied based solely on a lack of financial qualifications." The last sentence in that paragraph says, "Due to the many uncertainties and lack of information regarding the proposed financing and future operations, there is not enough information that has been made available to review to make any conclusions regarding the financial qualification of Midwest's ability to own and operate the system after the acquisition in the initial operating period." I understand what you're trying to say, and it's, I'm not going to call it a CYA, but there just is a lack of information and operational track record. But there's some, it creates some nervousness because, you know, if it doesn't, if you don't get the commitments and stuff, where do we stand and who services this market?
Well, you've gone right to the direct part of this question. I sat on the phone today for an hour and a half with a different set of financial consultants that are also looking at this deal and a parade of attorneys from all the various companies arguing about EBITDA and what was applicable, what wasn't. I think what this, what we're saying in this report is, if they obtain the financing to close the transaction, under the FCC rules, they have to show that they have 90 days of operating cash available to hit their initial financing level and to move forward to close the transaction. They're either going to have that financing available or the whole deal's going to collapse, in which case your approval is rendered moot because they won't be able to close, they won't have financing. So when they obtain the financing, assuming that occurs, they're going to have, they're going to meet that initial threshold. What the qualifier says is, will this company be a viable company in two years' time, three years' time, 10 years' time? We don't know. And we look at it and we say, they're going to have a much steeper hill to climb than Comcast. They're going to be paying off the top four and a quarter percent, Charter, for the services. They're going to be paying ongoing expenses. Their programming costs are no question going to be higher than Comcast. There's a lot of things going against, plus they have substantial debt maintenance Comcast did have. So all of those things, you know, the banks that are going to be putting the money forward on the debt side, they're going to be taking a risk that this company can ultimately perform. What we're saying is, we can't predict the future. Well, I can't tell you what the company's going to look like in two years or beyond, you know, even that window of stuff. But what I can say is, if they obtain this financing, they're going to have the minimum standard required under the FCC's 394. That's why we come to the conclusion that if they hit that criteria, you're going to have a hard time if you were to say, I don't want to do this, Brian, I want to deny. We need to be able to then say, why are we denying? If it's for a lack of financial qualification, that's going to be difficult the way this transaction plays.
And, and, and once again, just going to point out my ignorance in regards to financial matters such as this, but so 90-day operational cash and operational ability is sufficient to give some credence or some confidence in the fact that all we're going to work with is this 90 days of operational cash and maintaining it. And then hopefully, in that 90 days, it's set up so you've got a cash flow that's going to be able to keep you going.
Again, good point. It happens to be the only objective standard that the feds have given us as an outside analyst, from at least from a local franchising authority perspective, to look at. So the operative question here is, what does it mean to be a financially qualified cable television company in 2014? What are the criteria? The 10-point punch list? You know, what is? And the answer is, nobody knows what that criteria is. That will vary from accountant to accountant and from bank to bank that looks at the deal. We can only hang our hat on some objective standard. The FCC, 20 years ago, when they wrote the Form 394, that is the form the company used to ask for permission to transfer, put that criteria in the financial qualification section. That we know exists. The rest of what you see in that analysis is largely taken from the Securities and Exchange Commission filing the company reported. And, you know, in those cases, they're advising would-be investors on the merits and potential con of the transaction, and we tried to lay that out. You could have somewhat of an informed decision about their quality.
Well, I'm going to be honest with you. I'm not sure how informed I'm going to be, but I appreciate the explanation. Thank you.
I have another question for Mike.
Certainly.
It appears as if you will be moving over to Midwest, is that's the case for the government relations folks?
Extensively. I don't have it in writing or in blood.
Okay. So with that being the likelihood of that happening, you'll be bringing back some of them, the management, to come meet us and discuss with us?
Yes, in fact, excuse me. That is our plan, that at the appropriate time, be it pre-transaction, which we fully expect to be a possibility, that we might have some senior leadership back in the market in January or February, and certainly post-transaction. To Mr. Grogan's point, this is one of the largest markets in the footprint next to Detroit and Indianapolis that Greatland Connections will operate, and so it's going to be a really important market for the team. I should mention that they're going to be based in the New York general area as a company. That's where the CEO lives. He didn't want to move too far from there, but they will be coming here quite a bit. And certainly, we've teed up with them both, not only the possibility, but the preference that they get in front of some of our local leaders. They have an opportunity to get to know you, and more importantly, for you to know them and ask any question that might be on your mind around their philosophy around the company, their experience before. As you saw in the presentation, they do, in particular, the CEO, have over four decades of experience in running a successful, financially viable, and robust cable company. And on a personal note, I think you'll not only really like this leadership team, I think you'll like what they have to say about being a cable company and being a little bit different than maybe the experience the Twin Cities has had over the course of the last handful of years. It's not to say it's better or worse, I would never say that about Comcast, but I do think when you have the opportunity to talk to them, you should ask a lot of these questions around their mindset, their approach, and frankly, their track record of being successful.
Okay. One of the other things, too, is as some of the questions get answered here, that you get information, I would invite you to come back because we always have discussion time in front of our, and I know that our viewers are going to want to know about this as it starts to get out more and more. So whatever you can do to come and publicly talk about some of the changes as you hear about them and know about them, it would be very nice if you would come back and do that.
I'd be happy to. There has been more financial information released about this transaction, rightfully so, because it is a unique situation as compared to the past when other cable operators have taken over a system. But I will absolutely commit that, whether it's myself or one of my other colleagues at Comcast or Greatland Connections, as we have new information, we'd be happy to come back and share it.
Okay. Counsel, any more questions? I will move to close a public hearing.
Second.
All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The public hearing is closed. At this time, I will make a motion to adopt the resolution approving the transfer of the Richfield Cable franchise and change of control of the grantee from Comcast to Midwest Cable, Inc.
Second.
Any other discussion or comments? All those in favor signify by aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Seeing no further business, I call this meeting adjourned. Thank you, everyone. Okay.